Teresa, are we gonna get the monitors here?
They should be on. Are they not on? Um. Here's that.
What button do you touch? That big black button?
Well, it's on the, yeah, it's on the monitor up there. It's just not on the individual. Did that one go? Why is Leon, um, I have Mayor Garcia dialed into Zoom also? I don't know. I'm gonna remember. On purpose? Into Zoom? I just took him out. I just took him off. Okay, so, everything is ready to go except your monitors are not turning on. But what's up there? It would be too heated out there. So, I think we're ready to go, but I'm just, um, I'm not sure about Mayor Garcia on the Zoom part.
Yeah, so what are you not sure about, Mark?
I don't think you need to be on Zoom, Mayor. I think you can, I think you can X out of there. Yeah, you can just hit the little D button. There we go. There we go. And you should have a written copy of the agenda here. So you can run the meeting from there and everybody else has access to the agenda. So I think we, I think we're good to go.
You up to go? Oh, meeting to order. Regular City Council meeting. City of American Canyon for June 7, 2022.
I can't hear. If there's any sound, I can't hear anything.
Hear your mic.
I'm getting the same response by constituency.
Oh, okay.
There we go.
We'll start again. I'll call the meeting to order. City of American Canyon. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
The United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, our nation under God, individual liberty and justice.
Thank you. Can we be heard now?
Testing, one, two.
I can hear you, Teresa, but I can't hear the council.
Testing, one, two.
How about now?
I can hear you, Mark.
Okay. Well, yeah, that gets back to, if we, yeah, we have to turn our mics on and, because otherwise, we're not supposed to be heard.
Okay. I think we're good.
Okay. Shall we continue?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Okay. We should talk about that. Yep. Yes. Councilmember Washington?
Here.
Councilmember Oro?
Here.
Councilmember Joseph?
Here.
Vice Mayor Abadamos?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here. Thank you. We'll move on now to report on closed session confirmation, report of action. Mr. Ross?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Board Chair, Council Members, Fire Board Members. There was a jointly scheduled closed session for both the City Council and the American Canyon Fire Protection District. You convened an open session at 5:31 to ascertain if there were any comments on matters agendized for either the city or the fire district for closed session. After determining that there were not, you adjourned to closed session. With respect to Agenda Item Number One, I will prepare a written report upon return from closed session consistent with the provisions of Government Code Section 54957B for only, the only one matter that was considered. With respect to Agenda Item Two, a city matter, there is no reportable action, but any reportable action dealing with this matter is handled under Open Session Agenda Item Number Fifteen later on your calendar. With respect to Agenda Item Number Three, which is the matter for the fire district, some context is needed. Current Chief Cahill is the chief of the fire district as a result of what's known as an annuited contract. He's a retired member of CalPERS. Because of regulations and interpretations advanced by CalPERS in March of this year, it was necessary to modify his agreement so that it terminates as of June 30, 2022. This is consistent with regulations and an application administered by CalPERS consistent with his status as an annuitant rather than an employee. As a result of that determination, the board announced, you know, wishes to announce and confirms that effective July 1, 2022, Jeff Belier will be the district chief of the American Canyon Fire Protection District. All the actions described are the result of public documents that support each of the descriptions that I've made. Again, Chief Cahill's contract terminates as of June 30, 2022, and effective July 1, 2022, Jeff Belier will be the chief of the American Canyon Fire Protection District. You concluded the closed session at 6:26 PM. That would be the report upon return from closed session, unless there are questions or comments by members of the council or by, or as members of the board.
Well, in terms of comment, I am, as the chair of the Fire District for American Canyon, we're very pleased to appoint Chief Jeff Belier as our chief fire chief effective July 1. Chief Belier.
Vice Mayor Abadamos, may you...
I can't hear you, but here's a virtual handshake.
There she goes.
Well, we look forward to your service as fire chief of American Canyon effective July 1, 2022.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Chief.
In that outstanding, we certainly appreciated Chief Cahill's service with us as he continues into the last few days, weeks of his service with us. So, we appreciate what you've done for us, Chief. Thank you. Okay. Any other comments or questions from Fire District or City Council? Seeing none, hearing none, thank you all. We'll move on to our agenda. Proclamations and presentations. Gives us the council great pleasure this evening for this proclamation on Juneteenth. City of American Canyon Proclamation, Juneteenth Independence Day. Whereas on January 1, 1863, President Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, declaring that all enslaved people in the rebellious states would be then and thencefore forever free. And whereas President Lincoln believed slavery to be a violation of the principles of the Declaration of Independence and that this abolition represented a new birth of freedom for the United States. And whereas although President Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation freeing slaves on January 1863, it's not until June 19, 1865, that Union soldiers arrived in Galveston, Texas, announcing the end of the Civil War and bearing federal orders proclaiming the end of slavery in the South and the southwestern United States. And whereas Juneteenth, or Juneteenth Independence Day, has a special meaning to African Americans, which combines the words of June and 19th commemorating the traditional observance of the end of slavery in the United States and observed annually on June 19th. And whereas Juneteenth is an important opportunity to honor the principles of the Declaration of Independence and celebrate the achievement and contributions of African Americans have made and continue to make in the City of American Canyon and across the nation. And whereas on June 19, 2022, in partnership with the American Canyon Arts Foundation, the City of American Canyon will be celebrating Juneteenth at Main Street Park from 1:00 PM to 6:00 PM. This unforgettable community event will celebrate African American heritage, history, and freedom through cultural ceremonies and activities that reflect the power of community, family, art, and tradition. And therefore, now therefore be it resolved, that I Leon Garcia, mayor of the City of American Canyon, on behalf of the City Council, do proclaim June 19, 2022, as Juneteenth Independence Day. In celebrating this day, I encourage all City of American Canyon community to attend the Juneteenth Community Event on June 19, 2022, at Main Street Park. Congratulations. Every night, once you receive the proclamation, very good.
Thank you. We're looking forward to this very much. Certainly, please.
Hello, everyone. First of all, it feels good to be back here. I've been missing all of you. It's been several years that I have not been able to work in the community because I'm a double caregiver, taking care of my mom and my husband. So having this opportunity, I am so honored, so thrilled, so excited to have been chosen to be the one to do the event planning for our Juneteenth celebration. I'm in my zone. I'm in my element, so I'm having the time of my life. I have invited out the part of the committee that has been selected. I wanted to introduce them to the council tonight. We have here tonight Orlando Harris, a community rep. Can you please stand? And he is the one who has been working on the beautiful flyer. He probably will not want to talk to me for about another year, but I thank him for working on how wonderful the flyer turned out. Thank you, Orlando. Next is Lenise Span. Lenise has been that go-to person with me. When I, I'm stressed and I'm running out of time and I need something to be done, I can give her a call and she, "Don't worry about it." But have you seen that advertisement in Safeway? That's her spot. She gave up her spot for the month so that we could have our advertisement at Safeway Store advertising the Juneteenth celebration. Lenise, we thank you and we appreciate that. Next is Sherry. Sherry Pruitt from V-Cat TV in Vallejo. She has been running the advertisement all month for us and will continue to do so. And she is also the one who will have for us, wait till you see it, a beautiful museum that's gonna be outstanding. And so Sherry takes my calls late at night, no matter what time I call. She said, "Don't worry, Brenda. I'm here." And thank you, Sherry, for everything that you have contributed. We also have Sherry Walton, who is not here tonight, but she has been such a good support.
Sherry.
She on the screen?
Sherry, turn your video on.
Okay, well, we see your name, Sherry, who has also been such a big support, and I'd probably call her three, four, or five times a day. Uh-oh, that's city time. Okay, so, we only talk after six.
Thanks for the clarification.
Thank you, Sherry, for all that you do in supporting the Juneteenth. And of course, our council member, Councilmember Pierre Washington. Oh, there's Sherry. Let's give her a hand. Thank you, Sherry. What I really love about Councilmember Washington is that he just sits and listens and let us do all the work, but he's there, which is good, because he can't, you know, nobody can come and say, "This is what he did." And the reason why it did this is because of him? No, no, no. He sits there, he smiles, he encourages, and so we need that. And we thank him for his leadership and being there with us on our committee meetings. Let's give him a hand. And we are in partnership with the American Canyon Arts Foundation. I could not have picked a better relationship. Why? Because they're just as excited, they have the same amount of energy, and Mark and I have been working so great together, and Clarence Magrall. We are just, you know, it's just a wonderful relationship that we have had. And I thank you, Councilmember Joseph, for being there. Thank you. And I would like to say thank you to the entire City Council, because if it wasn't for you doing that 5-0 vote, we would not be able to be having this celebration coming up. It was Jason who, I'm sorry, I forgot, this is professional, our city manager, Jason Holly, who was really adamant about us having this. And I really thank him for entrusting me with this opportunity and believing that I could do it, and it's gonna be such a wonderful, wonderful time. The fire department, the police department, the nonprofit organizations. It is so many people who have played a role in the success of this Juneteenth celebration. So I invite you to be there. We're looking for you to be a part of it. It's on Sunday, June 19, and it starts with a gospel hour from 12 to 1. Don't worry, I'm giving my sermon now. I would not be there. But it will be a wonderful, wonderful day of jazz, of blues, of gospel, of R and B. There would be fantastic speakers. We have a descendant who is the descendant of Booker T. Washington, a descendant of a runaway slave, a descendant of Rosa Parks. And we have the publisher of the Oakland newspaper, who will be there to be our keynote speaker. We have the Buffalo Soldiers who will come and deliver our flags, both flags, the red, white, and blue, plus the red, black, and green. There will also be Ben Anderson, who is a former founder, member, and first black mayor in the American Canyon. He will be there. Plus, African Americans are in the, are Ventners in the Napa, well, some in the Napa Valley. But Mac McDonald, who is the founding member of the African American Ventners Association, will also be there. So my God, I know you're sitting there saying, "You can't wait." I know, I'm probably gonna go home tonight and see you just sitting there. Just bring your chairs, bring your blankets, and just be prepared to have a wonderful, wonderful day. And I say to all of you, thank you. I am so honored to have this opportunity, and I look forward in having such a wonderful showing with all the support so that we will know this is something we need in our community, because so many community folks have participated. So thank you for this honor. Thank you for allowing us to be a part of this. And I look forward to seeing you, each and every one of you, 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 and you, on Sunday, June 19, starting at 1:00 PM. Thank, oh, thank you, Beth. That's why you always be there. It's being held at the Main Street Park, which is right across the street. You will park at Larry's and Pat's Trucking. It's $10 for parking, but that $10 help provide safety for your car. There would be security on duty, and there would be a shuttle that would take you to the park. Okay? And so we ask that you abide by the rules. Please don't come and try to cross the highway, because that's very dangerous. So please use the shuttle in coming to the services. And we just look forward to you. So much, so many people are so excited about this. And you can tell I am. I would be turning cartwheels, but I'm just too tired to do so. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Brenda. Well, thank you, Brenda. Certainly appreciate the lineup you have for the community. I'd point out, this is a historic, well, this is the first time we have celebrated Juneteenth in Napa County, and our community goes a long ways toward exemplifying what that all means. So thank you, and we look very much forward to the event. Next, I have a...
Mr. Mayor, can I say something really quickly?
Certainly. Go ahead.
Sorry. Thank you, Brenda, for everything that you do, as always, but I just wanted to let you know something about Councilmember Washington. When we first bought our house, Councilmember Washington offered to help us paint it. And then, when I reached out to him and his wife, his wife started laughing at me and said, "You expect Pierre to paint a house? If he did things like that, then I wouldn't have to do them." So, he's, he's very sweet, very kind. He listens, and he offers. You're not the only one.
I know, I know, I know, I know. Councilmember Washington, I hope you interpret this as the kind of team camaraderie that we're so famous for.
I feel the love, though.
You know, I think, Councilmember Washington, you're gonna be great demand out there.
Love is the only thing that matters, Pierre. That's right.
Okay.
Is in the waiting room? Okay.
We'll move on to our, in our proclamations and presentations. Next is proclamation recognizing June 2022 as Pride Month. Recipient is Fernando Espinoza. Is that person here?
He is here. He's on Zoom. I'm calling him over.
Bring him over.
There we go. Okay, you're on, Fernando. Go ahead.
Okay, well, there you are. Hello, welcome. Good to have you here at our meeting this evening.
Thank you for having us.
Well, this is certainly a very important celebration for all of us in our communities and our families, so we look forward to it. Thank you. City of American Canyon Proclamation. June 2022 as Pride Month. Whereas the City of American Canyon recognizes and proclaims the month of June 2022 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ Pride Month throughout the City of American Canyon. And whereas the City of American Canyon observes Pride Month with a pride flag raising ceremony to honor the history of the LGBTQ liberation movement and to support the rights of all citizens to experience equality and freedom from discrimination. And whereas the rainbow flag is widely recognized as a symbol of pride, inclusion, and support for social movements that advocate for LGBTQ people within our community. And whereas all human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights, LGBTQ individuals have made immeasurable impact on the culture, civic, and economic success of our county, our country. And whereas the City of American Canyon is committed to supporting visibly dignity and equality, visibility, dignity, equality for LGBTQ people in our diverse community. And whereas while society at large increases support for LGBTQ equality, it is essential to acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to indiscrimination and prejudice. And whereas celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for the American Canyon LGBTQ community, it is an opportunity to take action and engage in dialogue to strengthen alliances, build acceptance, and advance equal rights. And whereas the City of American Canyon encourages everyone to participate in Pride Pop-Up on June 18, 2022, from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM at Community Park 2. And now therefore be it resolved that I Leon Garcia do hereby proclaim June 2022 as Pride Month and that the rainbow flag will be raised for an entire month of June in support of our LGBTQ community to recognize the influential and lasting contributions they continue to make in our vibrant community in which we live, work, and visit. Thank you. So I wish you were here. I could hand you this proclamation, but we'll make sure you get it.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that.
Comment now, would be, anything to say?
Yeah, actually, ooh, the lights just turned off. But thank you all so much. You know, I was born and raised here in Napa County and, you know, just as I was growing up as a kid, there was many times where I felt unsafe to be myself, be who I am. And hearing this proclamation just kind of makes me feel really great. And knowing that, I'm sure that other folks, other young folks and people of all ages that are LGBTQ, really, this, this is gonna help a lot. It, I love that we have your support. And so with me today, I have Jade Diwa, who is American Canyon local, and so I'm gonna pass the mic to her.
Hi, everyone. So, yes, I'm also the program coordinator for LGBTQ connection in American Canyon. I just passed my one-year mark working here, and I can say that we've made a lot of milestones in the community. And, you know, I'm happy to like, I'm looking forward to like more growth as, as time goes on. And I just wanted to speak a little bit on kind of the context of pride, especially this year. So as many of you may know, the, we're kind of living in this time of like the double-edged sword of visibility where, you know, we have a lot of young youth coming out, people of all ages really coming out as LGBTQ. And it's, it's great, you know, we're happy to see it, love to see it. Especially like how Fern said, compared to us growing up, there was nothing like that. However, there's been a lot of backlash nationally where, you know, we have like, there's over 200 anti-LGBTQ bills being passed. And so, you know, while California is considered more of a sanctuary state, there definitely is still work to do in our own communities. Part of what, one of the many things that I'm doing in the community is part of the steering committee for the Family Resource Center. And, you know, they asked what my hope was for this, for the FRC, and I said that I hope it will serve as a beacon of interdependence in our community. We all need each other to keep our community safe, healthy, happy, and loved, especially in a time like this. especially in a time like this. Rather than relying on outdated institutions whose foundations were built upon inequity and disinformation, we need to create our own structures of support, connections, and resources accessible to everyone. And so, I'd also like to say, in honor of Juneteenth, we stand in solidarity with our Black, Indigenous, and communities of color. Black liberation is LGBTQ liberation. And as stated by Marsha P. Johnson, one of the Black trans women who founded the movement for game trans liberation, there's no pride for some of us without liberation for all of us. And so, yeah, thank you for having us. And I just wanted to make a little quick correction about the event, because I think it was left over from last year. So, American Canyon Pride is gonna be on Saturday, June 18th, from 11:00 to 4:00 P. M. And that's gonna be at Community Park 2. Yeah. So, I hope to see y'all there. And we're also excited to be joining the Juneteenth festivities.
Very good. Thank you. Really appreciate your commitment and dedication to supporting community throughout, well, in American Canyon particularly, in Napa. Wherever you work, that's very important that you do that. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
That correction was...
Eleven to four.
Eleven to four, yes. Okay. Eleven to four. Yeah, that's still at Community Park 2. All right. Thank you. We'll move on with our agenda now. Public comments, items not on the agenda? Anybody, have we received any public comment?
We have. We have received public comments, written comments, from Tammy Wong and Michelle Leitie.
Anybody wishing to speak?
Beth Marcus. I would just like to say thank you, well, he left, Chief Cahill, for his time, for, you know, coming out of retirement to be with us for the few years that he was, being a member of the CERT team. He was very supportive of us and taught us a lot. And so, we're gonna miss him a great deal. But we are very fortunate to have Chief Baye coming on board. I mean, he's fantastic and look forward to working with you closely as well.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Anybody on the phone, or online?
Let me see. I have... I have Justin Hamilton-Hole. Go ahead, Justin.
Thank you, Teresa, Tracy. Thank you. And Amy O'Veigh.
This one here, you go ahead.
Working. But I hear the C. Clark can change her name to the room something. I always see her name on Zoom. I was gonna make comment, Brenda Black, she amazing. I, I so happy that we're gonna do a Main Street. So, I'm gonna sign up, Brenda Black, doing good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
Any other speakers?
Yes. I have Hugh Marquez. Go ahead, Hugh.
Hello, City Council, City Manager. My name is Hugh Marquez. I wanted to thank the city for another great Memorial Day. American Canyon troops support in the city did very well for the Memorial Day services. I thought it went very well. It's good to see the city working with our organizations in the city to help plan and get things done in the city. I also come to you because I, I joined a planning commission meeting. And I understand that there are some parks that are slated to be rebuilt. And I wanted to bring the City Council and the City Manager an idea of including an inclusive park, one that will be used, that can be used by handicapped children. In the past, there's been people that have asked. And so, at the planning commission meeting from, I believe it was Erica, she referred me to Ally Akita to find out what we could do to try to get an inclusive park. I've talked to a few people, and I've been told that North Hampton has been slated to be redone and thought that that may be a good spot to put one. I also hope the City Council and City Manager, when Watson Ranch is put in, can have the developer maybe install one on that side. It would definitely show that we love everyone if we had a couple of inclusive parks. With that, I also noticed that there are some parks that are slated to be closed. And I'm hoping that this, that the park and Rex and Public Works will not put in. There's one on Bedford Lane. It's right in the middle of Bedford Lane and Kittington Way. It's a park that has yellow tape all over it, all over it right now, because it's not supposed to be used. And nobody's ever used that. Everybody goes to the tennis courts, goes to the tennis courts and the big playground there. And as much as I walk around, I really have never seen any child use that park. So, I hope that if there are some parks that have not been utilized, that were built in the past, that we will not put one in there, that we will consider not putting one there just to put one in when children are going to the more bigger playgrounds. The last thing I'd like to bring up is Fourth of July celebration is coming. And I'm hoping that the same cooperation that, that the city had for the Memorial Day will go over into the Fourth of July celebration. I say that because I...
Hugh, I'm sorry, we're at time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Chris James on the line. Go ahead, Chris.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
So, I guess this is an informational thing. And maybe the city staff, some city staff could get back to me at the end of this. I know they can't address me directly tonight. I was just at Safeway right before this meeting.
Oh, shoot.
You, am I back again?
Yes, you are. Go ahead.
Okay, I was muted again. Okay, yeah, I was, right before this meeting, I was at Safeway's, minutes before the meeting started. There's a guy there collecting signatures. I had a big pack of them, but one of them was for, from the city. He kept on saying he was from the city attorney to fix traffic on Highway 29. And so, that piqued my interest, and it was like, what is this thing? So, he kept on telling me that the city wants to develop some land to help fix 29 traffic. I, I was in a rush to come back, so I couldn't really read the whole text or take a picture of the text. I tried to read it best I can. But he kept on saying he was Green Island Road, Green Island Road. 157 acres gonna be developed to help fix traffic on 29. And that's how he was pitching this thing. So, I don't think this is the late Hess development, where we're gonna, the winery's gonna be converted. But I think it's another winery, a set of wineries of land that's gonna be converted. And what I can find online is there's a, some movement for us to change the sewer of influence for a plot of land right next to the wetlands. I walk along, I think I know which it is, is right at the end of Green Island Road, right along the wetlands. And it's like a buffer between us and those warehouses. They wanna take warehouses right down to that line now, right down to the wetlands. So, I'm concerned about this. So, I would like someone to get back to me why the city is pushing for this. Maybe they're not, maybe someone else, and they're using the city's attorney's name on these petitions to put it on the ballot. But I'm just concerned that we're going more and more into this green belt to consume these, you know, the ways it's gonna consume that. And, you know, and then they're selling it as it's gonna fix 29 traffic. And it's so far away from 29, I don't know how it's gonna fix 29 traffic. But that's how they're pitching it in this petition. Okay, so it's more informational for the, for people may not have heard it, that are listening in. And I would love to hear from the city to what this really is all about. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no other hands raised.
Okay, very good. We'll close the public comment on items not on the agenda this time. We'll move on with our agenda. Any agenda changes? If not, I will accept a motion to accept the agenda. So moved. By the consent calendar. So moved the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Okay. Councilmember Joseph.
Yes.
Councilmember Oreo.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Abadamos.
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia.
Yes. Thank you, Council. Moving on in our agenda, there are public hearings, there are none this evening. Move on to business items, item number 14, enhanced solid waste services and proposed residential rate increase, SB 1383.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, Council, Community of American Canyon. Erica Smithy is Public Works Director. I'm here to speak to you about the enhanced solid waste services and proposed residential rate increase. We brought this to you as a workshop discussion on May 3rd. I do have Derek Nielsen here again from Recology to answer any questions you may have. I know we did have public comment on this item as well. As an overview, we came to you to discuss the reasons for the increases to the current residential rates. We have an unfunded state mandate to start collecting organic waste in the form of putting our food and waste, food waste, edible waste into our yard bins. It's already covered in our commercial rate system. They've already been a requirement for years. But now, it's now a requirement as of January 1st of this year to implement in our city statewide, our agencies statewide. One of the increases that we've asked for, there's a baseline increase. I can bring up the staff report or the PowerPoint we brought up last time. There were several options we shared with you. We asked Recology also to look at the ability to provide a franchise rate fee for having a dedicated solid waste person on city staff to do all the enforcement policies on this, because there is a lot to be done. We already had a current enforcement with, without the new mandates. But now, it's a new long list that requires enforcement to start happening in 2024. So, I think we're waiting for a little technology here. But in essence, though, our current residential rates are the lowest in the county. They'll continue to be the lowest in the county with the proposed recommendations that city staff brought forward and Council reached consensus on on May 3rd. It will cover the baseline requirements for Recology to collect the organic waste from residents. And then, the recommended staff recommendation would include a full-time staff member equivalent to about $150,000 a year that will cover the expenses of having that dedicated staff person. But as, as we were discussing at the meeting, that it'd probably be one dedicated staff member, but there will be multiple people working on solid waste as far as having one team member from environmental going out and doing one inspection for commercials instead of, and then also doing the route reviews on the residentials, instead of having multiple people going out and doing inspections on people, be one person dedicated to it, also efficiency. And I don't know if we're up yet. We up yet?
There we go.
There we go. Always, I'm good. I like having visuals. So, here is the overview of the options. The baseline option was the bare minimum that Recology needs to actually collect the, collect the organic waste from the yard bins. And they can go on a little bit more on that, because I know we had comments about the composting mechanisms and other incentives that would come along with Recology or possibilities. And they can also provide what we actually already, or Recology already provides to the resident customers within our city. But the options here are outlaid, was the option one, was the base minimum increase above the current residential rates. It's a couple of dollars. And then, you had the option two was the baseline plus a half-time, full-time employee equivalent. And the option three was the, again, the baseline with a full-time equivalent and staff person. And then, option four was the outreach and route reviews that could be done by Recology alone. And then, you had the option five, which was a half-full-time employee added on to option four. And then, option six was a full-time employee with the outreach route reviews. We provided the next slide, which was the, showing the rates across all the county agencies. And then, we had our neighbors, Benicia and Valeo. Now, the difference here with these rates in Benicia, they're very close to the city rates. What I found out was the residential rates, they only do yard waste pickup once every two weeks, and it's not very consistent. So, that's why their rates are actually inconsistent with ours. It's because they're not going out every week, like Recology is for American Canyon. So, again, you know, for our region, we're still gonna be the lowest rates even with the proposed increase of option three. And then, we have the snapshot of the current residential rates, the option one baseline, and the option three staff recommendation. Now, I was asked at the last meeting, what would that staff person be doing? Right now, we're actually in franchise agreement negotiations with Recology on top of the residential rates, like term, extending the term and whether we go to, we've changed from the standards. So, once the residential rates are set, like the commercial rates are now, we have an annual CPI increase. They've talked about maybe doing a water sewer trash index, which just focuses on those utility index instead of everything that CPI does. It doesn't fluctuate as greatly as a CPI does. But, but that's something that we're negotiating with Recology concurrently with the specific rates. Because when we raise the rates significantly like this, we need to go to a Prop 218 process. So, we have to make additional findings, which are in the staff report. But the staff person, back to the staff person, I'm kind of going off sideways here. Franchise agreement negotiations, they'll be in charge of schedule and ensure all regulatory requirements are being completed by the city and Recology. Ensure all franchise reporting collection requirements are being completed, regular check-ins. Currently, I'm the designated person, because we're short a staff member at this point in time. Roadway sweeping is being properly conducted and following up with residents. Right now, it's a public works role. It transitions who's available to respond. Street supervisor gets involved. But this one person can be dedicated to that and do a little more self-awareness with Recology and the residents. Coordinate with the county on regional solid waste food recovery efforts. There are quite a bit of meetings happening with the county. I'm also on the task force. I think our mayor is one of the board members for solid waste. So, there's a lot involved, a lot of meetings involved. And that's just our normal job. Now, you got this mandate on top of it. We have apply and administer Caliber Cycle grants, implement and monitor waiver process for solid waste generators. That's for our multi-housing apartment complexes or others might be able to get a waiver input for, when they're coming for development or even the current, they can't meet these requirements. We've found that one of our apartment complexes could meet the requirements, another one may not. So, there's actually a waiver process that we have to implement with, that's in our municipal code. Ensure city departments or authorized contractors and vendors are meeting our SB 1383 requirements. Inspection investigation of commercial businesses is part of recycling food recovery. That's the next part, trying to capture food that can be now gone to soup kitchens or food banks. That's being studied by the county. We're partnering with them. Everyone's paying a shared rate with the countywide. But that'll be another layer that's coming to this. Contamination and minimization audits of residential and commercial routes. It's already being conducted with commercial routes. But now, we gotta add the route review for our residents and seeing if they're implementing their recovery correctly in the residential bins. Education outreach, it's ongoing. We have a great communications group within the city, but this person will be assisting Jen Kansenback's team. Follow-up and enforcement for non-compliant business and residents. Again, we already do this for businesses, but now I'll be with residents. And then, completing all reports of Cal recycle. It's usually on an annual basis and check-in, but there's other items that are coming up with SB 1383. And then, of course, all the public outreach, Earth Day, and quartering cleanup events with Parks and Rec and the county and our communications department. So, that's just a synopsis. We know there's more to come. We actually have a consultant on board now assisting us with some of these implementations. But I can't tell you the hours that's gonna be. But I think that rate increase, minimal rate increase to implement and cover the cost of that additional employee dedicated. It's not additional, it's filling that employee that we have a shortage of right now be dedicated to this, this solid waste program. So, the staff recommendation in front of you this evening is to adopt a resolution that sets a public hearing date of August 16th for the rate increase to conform with Prop 218 and direct staff to commence the 45-day protest process. We've provided a draft notice that will go out to the residents shortly after this meeting, if adopted. And we also requested Recology to help us with bill inserts and getting this out to customers. Because it's, we actually, August sixteenth is more than forty-five days out, so we're going to try to plug it as much as possible so that the community is informed of these increases. We've already received at least one call asking why we're increasing, then we received the public comment this afternoon requesting an audit. But the notice will include information about refuse collection services, the reason for the increase. And this little snapshot right here is going to be included on the placard. Owners will be informed if they wish to protest the new rates and submit their written protest to the city clerk in advance or the night of the meeting concurrent with this process. Again, we'll have, be working on the contract negotiations for extension. And the idea was we bring that back to the council at the same time as the August sixteenth meeting. Two separate resolutions, and then this could, if adopted and the formal protests meet fifty-one percent of the votes, that it could be implemented as early as September first of this year so we can get in compliance with the state. And that completes my presentation, too. It's a lot of information.
Information, yes. And thank you. That's a good synopsis of the workshop we had as well. Questions from council? No. Any questions? I think some of the, well, go ahead, Councilmember Joseph.
I was going to say, I may have some comments after a public comment, but nothing right away.
At this point, anybody from the public wanting to comment at this time?
This is actually not from me. This is from Cindy Biederman. She asked me to read it. There's a lot of detail, but she's talking about the last meeting that we were here. And a couple of people asked if the Recology would sell the compost made from organic recycled waste, and the answer was no. And she attended a meeting on June second, and she had, and they were explaining the process to Valeo residents that they recycle the waste. It's transported to Vacaville and turned into compost. By law, a percentage of the processed compost will be returned to the city to be dispersed to residents within the city on first come, first, first come, first served basis with no fee. However, the remaining compost will be sold. When Recology's profit range on the solid compost was questioned, the residents were told Recology was a proprietorship. Their finances, profits were not subject to public review. They stated it would be up to the city council to review Recology's finances and profit margins by conducting an audit. And she further states that residents are mandated to have and pay garbage collections, yet we have no way of knowing if we are getting the best bang for our buck. We're reliant upon our council to ensure we are getting the best service at a reasonable cost and not being taken advantage of. However, the staff report falls short providing such information. It only addresses the cost to be paid by residents based on Recology's presentation than leaving unanswered questions. We're living in financial precarious times, making transparency even more vital, not knowing how much profit can be made from the organic recycled waste collected and sorted by the residents. In addition to the monthly rate increase creates a level of distrust. The only way to ascertain Recology's financial gain is by city council requesting an audit. An audit would provide transparency of valuable information needed to make an informed decision for the good of the residents, knowing the bottom line would be utilized for price comparison with competitors or to wall off excessive monthly rates to a potential monopoly.
Okay. Thank you. Any other, any other public speakers on this?
Fran Lemus. I don't quite understand. Is this the same as Napa? In other words, you're going to be putting food? Is that what this is about? You're going to be putting food in the waste?
Food waste, yeah.
Right. Okay. Well, my son lives in Napa, and they've been doing that for over a year. And I don't know if their rates increased. I don't know. Did you compare it to Napa? Oh, okay. So is, are they the same, about the same prices?
They're one of the highest.
They're higher. Okay. Okay. I was just wondering if it's the same thing. So we're going to have one garbage can that we can put everything in. Is that correct?
It would be for green waste and food waste.
And right now, we have a garbage and a blue, a green, and a gray.
Right.
So we're going to be able to put it in the little garbage can. Is that correct?
You can put it in the, I understand it, the green, right?
The regular garbage.
I'm wondering if we could have staff kind of clarify what the new rules are going to be?
Well, I just kind of wondered because they've been doing it for a long time, and he likes it.
Yeah. Fran, you know, one of the comments I was going to make is, at our last meeting, I requested that staff always present what goes into the trash and what bucket, because this is going to take a very long education process.
Right.
Because I'm still hesitant about what goes in there or not. And so if we can have that every time we have this discussion, it would be very helpful.
Helpful if they had a label on top of the can.
Well, I like the garbage anyway. It's good to get rid of.
Yeah, just, we have, please go ahead, sir.
So, good evening. My name is Derek Nelson, General Manager, Recology, American Canyon. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to respond to these questions and be your service provider. So in the last meeting, the question was asked, do we sell the compost? We have to pay a processing fee. So we send our compost to Jepson Prairie Organics, which is a Recology company, and we pay an inter-company rate, which is better than, let's say Sacramento sending their compost there or Fairfield sending their compost there. The rate that we pay currently for yard waste is fifty-one dollars and eighty-five cents per ton, inter-company rate. Once we start putting the putrescible food waste inside of this cart, it changes the contents of it and thus the rate. The rate for residential food waste, the inter-company rate that we're going to get is seventy dollars and seventy-five cents per ton. So looking at the current volumes that we have with our yard waste and then doing a migration based off of a CalRecycle, study on what they look at is inside of our garbage cans. We're looking at a hundred thousand, one hundred and eleven thousand dollars of increased disposal cost. And that's a large percentage of the rate increases, having to pay for that disposal. And then, as Erica pointed out, the other large portion of that is the staff member. That's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so those items with liability insurance, regional allocation, safety, environmental compliance, that's the rate. It comes out to two hundred and ninety thousand dollars, and that's being spread amongst the ratepayers. Trying to think of the next question.
What goes in the garbage can?
Oh, yes. So that's the easy part for me, at least. Garbage is going to be everything that's non-organic and non-recyclable. So film plastic, diapers, pet waste, we can't put in the compost. And by film plastic, if it's a non-rigid plastic, like if you can't hold it like a plastic cup and it sits upright and it's flimsy and floppy, that goes in the trash. Your recycling, you can continue to put cardboard, paper, cans, bottles, glass. And then the compost, the green can, which you're currently putting your yard waste in, you can start putting in organic matter. So all of your food trimmings, leftover food, soiled papers. Like if you ordered a pizza and you had a greasy pizza box, now that that has that grease and cheese melted all over it, you can put that in the compost cart as well. And coffee grinds, that's excellent, eggshells. You know, I can go on and on, but the compost at the Recology facility does get sold. But the sale of compost, there's two things here. One of them is with the entire state being required to compost, it's going to be a supply and demand issue. There's going to be an overabundance of compost and almost maybe too much compost. It's not going to be just flying off the shelves at a high rate that we're going to just make a killing on because there's going to be so much of it. The other issue is environmental compliance. In order to take this material and compost it, there's a lot of regulatory compliance that's involved. They recently took some material in from Sacramento at this facility, and they had to make a nine million dollar, you know, capital improvement on stormwater so that we can accommodate this additional material. So there's a lot of infrastructure involved in having these facilities outfitted so that they can do this, you know, environmentally compliant.
Is there a question? Councilmember Joseph? Okay. See, I'm wondering if you put kitchen organic waste in a green barrel, and you don't have a layer, say, of yard waste on top of it. Well, some of it's actually going to leach down to the bottom of the barrel, and then people flush it out at curbside typically. So now you have a waste product that's potentially, it's a drain system as well. So I don't know if there's any look forward at what impact that might have or how we control it.
So the best way that we would recommend controlling it, and this is something that we've been talking to residents in Valeo about, is, you know, commonly when people go to grocery stores, they're asking for plastic bags, even though there's been a plastic bag, you know, fine of ten cents per. You know, start switching towards paper bags, and that's something that you can put your food waste in, and it is more absorbent, and it'll help absorb some of that leachate from soaking into the bottom of your cart.
I think one presentation we got put in the freezer overnight before trash day.
Yes, sir. And to answer your question from the last meeting, the mayor had a good question last meeting about, you know, the intent of thirteen eighty-three is to reduce methane gas from entering the atmosphere. And he asked, well, if the food is breaking down in a landfill and that's producing methane gas, it's also breaking down in a compost pile, and why isn't that producing methane gas? And the answer to that is they use a system called negative aeration. And so underneath these compost piles, they have valves that are drawing air into the pile. Whereas in a landfill, it doesn't have that infrastructure, and this is another reason why it costs more to do this. And so rather than the air just being off-putting from the pile, it's drawing air in through the pile. And then it goes through a series of biofilters, which is a hardwood filter that absorbs the methane. And then they're also doing constant monitoring and testing of the air to ensure that they're not, you know, emitting methane gases. And all these things are regulated by the state and, you know, California EPA and CalRecycle.
Anything further from council? Do you want to hear it? Thank you.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it. We learned a lot about methane gas, didn't we? I think this was informational, that we have a resolution here.
Well, I don't know if public comment's still open.
I don't know that it is. Does anybody else want to comment? Because we inserted this in there.
Yeah.
A closed public comment.
We hear everybody online by any chance?
There are no hands raised.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I did have one comment before we take action, though. And that's in conjunction with Ms. Biederman's comments about oversight. And I tend to agree. I think periodically, and I don't know if Recology's finances are subject to audit or not, but we should look on a regular basis to see whether or not everything is coming, you know, everything is working out. Particularly in this case where we're, you know, adopting a new program, significantly changing the rates, because it can work both ways. On the one hand, it doesn't sound like they're going to make much off of the compost. But we may discover that more people are shifting from the thirty-two or sixty-four, ninety-six gallon containers to smaller, and it may actually have more of a negative financial impact on Recology than we're all assuming. So I think it behooves us to look perhaps at least annually to do some kind of a quick financial review, just to make sure everything's on target. I remember years ago, I was involved a little bit in solid waste, and recycling was kicking in. And everybody assumed that if I'm recycling, you're making a bunch of money. And the reality is you never really made that much, but the public perception is you must be making outlook abandoned. And a few years ago, when China quit taking all of our recyclables, we not only didn't make outlook abandon, we just lost lots. So I think it behooves us to look just to make sure both ways. Who knows? Maybe they are making a killing, and we ought to know that as well. So that's the only suggestion I would throw out, that that be part of the review process.
Well, we sort of have that opportunity with a public hearing in August. If there's nothing else from council, we do have a resolution.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution number twenty twenty-two, next in order. Resolution of the City Council of the City of American Canyon, California, declaring its intention to adopt increased residential solid waste rates, setting a public hearing for August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, and directing the issuance of notices of Proposition two one eight, public hearing to all solid waste customers and property owners within the City of American Canyon.
I'll second it. Motion second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Joseph.
Yes.
Councilmember Oro.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Abadamos.
Yes. That's the baby in the background.
And Mayor Garcia.
Yes. Thank you. Somebody's needing some attention there. Moving on to our agenda, item number fourteen, Draft Comprehensive General Plan Update, SEQA Notice of Preparation, NOP.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers and members of the public. I'm Brent Cooper, the Community Development Director. This item tonight is a follow-up from a conversation we had on April. And just to update you, if you're feedback on some changes we've made to the general plan notice of preparation. So I have a very brief presentation here for you. Just a quick recap. The general plan update has been broken into two phases. This is an effort to bring the general plan into conformance with state laws quickly as possible. And so this first phase is being referred to as a technical update. There are some changes to policies that will be brought into here that we kind of can't live without. And as well, along with that, as I mentioned, there's quite a few state laws that have changed in the last few years, let alone the general plan itself being about twenty years old. And so after that is done, then we'll work on a phase two where we're going to dive into some broader issues. There's a little bit of overlap between this. I know that we talked about refreshing some of the vision for the city in the general plan. And that's part of phase one. I think that's pretty critical, very basic level. And so that is part of what we would do in working with the first phase. But it's kind of, I want to let you know, and remind you, we have kind of a two-step process in order to keep the city on good legal standing. Another recap as well. We have a much broader study area for our proposed general plan than we have had in the past. Our general plan study in the past would be what mostly you see here in this yellow area. And so the hatched area is the proposed general plan study area. And it's broader like this because this is the historic area for the city's water service area. And so as the water purveyor for this broader area, there are ramifications for the city because of that service that's provided. And having the general plan reflect that is for consistency, just to make sure that we're addressing a very important issue. Of course, we know how important water is.
So you're speaking about the area that's outlined in black.
In the black. That's right. And in accordance to state law, it's the area within the city or sphere of influence and any other area that influences city policies. And certainly water service provision and our sewer service area is smaller than the water service area. But there are also very large areas as well that are within our sewer service area that are outside the city limits. So this is really a reflection of reality. And where it fits in terms of the policies, perhaps somewhat limited compared to what we might think about in terms of our development of our city and our sphere. But nevertheless, there will be policies that should be reflected in the general plan to reflect this sort of situation that exists today. I'd mentioned this is more of a technical update. There are some minor land use changes. We talked about it last time. There are some things for consistency between what's happening on the ground and the general plan where we kind of run a little bit of a difference, and so this is kind of bringing them into conformance. There are some policy changes that are important. You might notice this sort of blue area up here. This is the Paoli Watson Lane annexation area. That's in That's in process right now. And so I'm not sure who's going to win, the general plan update or the update to the annexation. But either way, there will be a change to our land use to reflect that area. And then we have some areas here that are flood plains and creeks and things, very minor. They have residential zoning that are to reflect them as what they are. And then we have some changes for our school district that are important because we have an area here on the west side of town. We look at the middle school, the zoning there is, in the general plan, is for residential, but it's a school. So it's going to stay a school, it's a school. So no point in having it residential. So those kinds of things, hope people can understand that. But certainly not, as you can see, a wholesale change to much of our land use. We talked about the circulation element last time and had a bit of a conversation about that. What staff had proposed at our April meeting is to reflect the Westside Connector modification that went to the council last July. And so I do show it here. It's a dash line that connects Commerce Court to Hess Road. And that was discussed and recommendation for our Circulation Element Committee and appeared at the time to have the concurrence of the city council. Along with the proposed roadway, we do have an existing, existing in paper, per our general plan, for an extension of Commerce. And this is in our circulation element today. And as we talked to our committee, we kind of bookmarked that and said, you know, this is an area that we would propose not be built. That was why we had the Westside Connector is to find a different route to that, although I think it was in the mix, but no one liked it. So since we have a proposal now, there would be no reason to keep this segment here. So between A and B would be deleted. And that's kind of where the cul-de-sac is, if you've been up on Commerce Court. And then it would delete that section south of that and then over to Eucalyptus. So that would just go away. Kind of picking up again to what the council contributed at the last meeting was an extension proposed in the county for Newell Drive. Of course, we all are looking forward to having a bypass to take relief from Highway 29. And that's what this Newell extension here would do. I was just having a nice conversation with Karen Fritz before this meeting, and we kind of went over some of this. And of course, we know that Newell isn't built anywhere near there today. Watson Ranch will build a segment of Newell, kind of shown in this sort of yellow-green line. And then the purpose for having the Paoli-Watson annexation is to find, get a funding mechanism to help for this next leg to take us to Highway 29. So this has been planned here since 2013. It was in a different alignment before that. So it's been on our plan for many, many years. And so that's existing in plan. And there are mechanisms to find that, ways to fund that. So this segment here is not in our plan today. And it is proposed in the county under the Laird-Hess property application. And so the council requested this segment be shown because it's part of a connection that has support of the council. So those are the proposed changes to the circulation element. We also spent some time talking about the urban limit line. This is an agreement that the city council reached with the Napa County Board of Supervisors in 2018, 2018, 2008, time flies. And that's the dashed red line that surrounds the city. And as we talked about last time, most of what was in the urban limit line has since been annexed into the city. So back in 2008, this area up here where Napa Logistics Park exists, the Panatoni property was in our urban limit line and outside our city limits. The high school was outside the city, the Canyon Estates was outside the city, Watson Ranch was outside the city. So those are all areas that were in our urban limit line back then and have now been annexed into the city. Today, we're left with a couple of areas that are on the east side of the city mostly. This is Newell family property between the high school and Canyon Estates. And this is property here up to the northeast of the city. Part of it's owned by the Newell family, part of it's owned by the Yeager family. That's in our urban limit line. And then over here on the west side, this is the Atkins property. And that property is also in our urban limit line, but it has a number of environmental constraints that make it difficult for development. And there was an opportunity for it to be tagged along with the same annexation as the Panatoni and Napa Logistics Park back in 2010. But there were some important documents that had to be signed, and they missed the deadline. So that's our urban limit line today. And of course, as we just mentioned, as part of the circulation, there is this application Hess-Laird on the northeast portion of the city. And that's here in the blue dash line. And the council at the time thought that would be a good idea to include into our general plan update as one of our urban limit line extensions. And so that's here proposed as one of the changes from what we presented to you in April. There was also conversation about the west here with the Green Island Vineyard, but I think there is an initiative circulating about that. So it has its really its own process to address that issue. And then I heard that there might be some discussion about the D-zone, so I included this map. And that's my update for you. And those are the changes proposed to our notice of preparation from what was presented to you in April. So glad to answer any questions you have.
Questions from council?
I do.
Go ahead.
Okay, first of all, just as a philosophical question. As we go through the general plan update, we can also use that update to address some other minor adjustments that have occurred in Watson Ranch specific plan or the Broadway specific plan. Is that correct?
It is correct.
Okay. So that might offer us some advantage because we were looking at amending those plans to reflect some of the on-the-ground changes. Theoretically, we can just throw that into the, into a bigger mix. So that might be a nice thing. Secondly, on the circulation element, well, let me not go there yet. Let me do the general plan update is a good thing. The environmental impact report, and I'm trying to figure out how to explain this in a manner that makes sense to anyone besides me, because I know what I'm talking about. We do an environmental impact report based on what the build-out capacity is normally. What I am suggesting or asking is, could we add additional capacity and do the environmental impact based on that? So if, for example, if we assume we're going to add 1,000 homes, what if we analyzed it based on 1,500? Likewise, with retail, office, commercial, and so on. And the reason being that an environmental impact report is expensive and subject to litigation and a big headache. And I'd rather do one that costs a little more and gives you a little bit of an environmental reserve, if you will, so that if we do want to tweak things down the road, we've more or less got an environmental reserve. So that would be one thing I would like to recommend so that we go through one headache once and we're done. And so now.
So Councilmember Joseph, let me just respond to that. There are a couple of ways in which the EIR, Environment Impact Report, can address that. One, it could be just part of the project description. That can be problematic because we haven't really done all our outreach yet. And I'm going to guess that we're going to come up with some really good ideas. And now, gosh, it isn't quite fit. And so what the second option, and we can perhaps do a combination, so they're not mutually exclusive, is all environment impact reports include alternatives. I know we did it with the Broadway District Plan where we swapped out some commercial expectation for additional housing. And if we ever wanted to invoke that option, it's been covered by the Environmental Impact Report. So the alternatives are a really important part. And so that could be also part of an alternative process so that if you ever did want to make use of it, well, you have an environmental EIR looking at it.
That probably is what I wanted to request.
Yeah, gets you more flexibility.
Is include an alternative that is a bigger footprint than we're looking at. Okay, good suggestion. I think that's great. On the urban limit line, I certainly appreciate the Hess-Laird parcel. And we have heard some negative feedback on the Green Island parcel. But I do think we ought to at least acknowledge it. Even though there is an initiative process going on, it's problematic as to what's going to happen. But I think from my perspective, we ought to look at those two big parcels. Hess on the east side, Green Island on the west side. Just because I think at some point, we're going to need more industrial land. And I recognize there's a downside to the Green Island parcel, but I'm kind of looking at the map, and there aren't a lot of alternatives. So that would be my other suggestion, is that we consider more than just the Hess-Laird. If we're going to be doing an urban limit line. Because again, whatever we do on that, we've got to go back to the voters. And I'd rather do one vote to cover everything than to have a vote now and a vote later. And I just think that that isn't a good strategy as far as gaining public support.
So Councilmember Joseph, one of the other components that would be really important if you were to think about the Green Island Vineyard would be the land use. So that's certainly, the general plan is all about land use. And so even, so if you were to amend the urban limit line, well, I'm not going to get into that, that could be complicated. But the other part I want to make is the land use part of it. If you think about what might motivate someone to vote for something is perhaps because they like what will get built there.
Right.
And so I think maybe you may also be suggesting that we look at what is a optimum use there. And that too could be discussed in the general plan.
And part of that could also include some setbacks. Because I agree, you know, building right up to a wetlands isn't the best idea. But some use for general industrial or maybe more specialized industrial might be of value. The final one really relates to some minor issues on the circulation map. Looking at this, I noticed we're showing an at-grade railroad crossing at the north end of the Newell extension. But I understand we may be arguing that it should be in, no. Instead of a grade separated, that perhaps it should be an at-grade because of the topography. Likewise, we're showing an at-grade at the Rio Del Mar extension, which I personally would have preferred, but we've kind of acknowledged it should be grade separated. And some of our major intersections, we might want to revisit. But my question is, how do we go about clarifying that? For example, I don't think it's showing the Napa Junction as an intersection at all, even though it seems kind of significant with a signal and so forth. And maybe the idea is that there's a 29 study going on that Caltrans and MBTA is doing. So can we put some language in here that says ultimately we're going to defer to what they recommend because it's their highway and we're lobbying it?
Well, yes, in some ways, they all kind of feel like a horse race. You do have the pit study for Highway 29 that will create some changes to what we're showing here. And it has its own process that's running pretty far along. So that may end up being amended ahead of the technical update to the general plan. But if not, then they could be, they can run parallel.
I guess my main point is, some of the things on this map will change based on where Caltrans goes with it. But, okay, well, that's my long series of questions. Thank you very much.
Other councilmembers? None? Okay. Council ready for public comment? Anybody in the audience wishing to comment? Seeing none, anybody online?
I have no hands raised online.
Okay.
So then the matter before us is we either adopt the NOP or whatever as proposed or with minor tweaks to it.
Councilmember Joseph, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but maybe I think what I should have said at the beginning is the notice of preparation is really the kickoff to the start of a process. It's not a conclusion. So the whole point of the notice of preparation is to let people know, hey, we're doing an environmental impact report for this project. What do you think? So it's, by its very nature, it's one that wants to get input. And some of what you've talked about tonight might be things other folks would think about and as well as things we haven't thought about.
Well, then, with that in mind, is there anything that we've talked about that lends itself to making an amendment to the NOP, the notice of preparation?
I know that you've made some conversations, perhaps if we have others, then the city manager and I can discuss after this, and which ones that we feel are critical to make before it's published, we can do that. And others, we could perhaps bookmark and note them as we go through outreach through the process.
Does that blue dotted line Hess, does that go straight up Hess or does it go across Hess?
So Fran was asking, this blue line here, which is the Westside Connector. It connects to Hess where Hess terminates today on the west side. I know that when we had the Westside Connector, there were a couple of different alternatives once it hits that, whether it continues past your.
I thought it was going to go up where you're going to open it up on Napa Junction and then across and then over the hill, is that correct?
So there were a couple of possibilities on what happens with the existing roads for the Westside Connector. Napa Junction is down to the south here. And it would need, there would need to be, if, if, there's two possible routes. One is, we're starting at the highway, you go west on Napa Junction Road, north on Hess, and then east on this, sorry, west on this connector. So that's one option. Another option is it just goes straight across and then down Lombard to Napa Junction Road.
Straight up? Yeah, I thought the first one was the one that you were talking about. But it looks like you're talking about the second one.
So there's, I don't believe there was a decision or favored route once it gets to the existing roads. That would be something that we could further talk about on the circulation element.
Different than what I had thought. Thank you.
Okay, anything further? All right. Mr. Holly, any comment?
No, Mayor. There is a resolution for this item.
There is?
Oh, no, I thought there was, my apologies.
No, you just wanted input to see if you can pour it.
Correct, you're right. I apologize.
So it, that matter to be continued with a lot more input from the public.
With that, we will be releasing this notice of preparation, inviting everybody to take a look at the EIR when it's ready.
So just to be clear, there isn't, because this is the beginning of the start of an event that's been 20 years in the making, for that matter, most of my concerns can still be integrated into the finished product.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. Matter of fact, hopefully, we get a lot of input on what people want. Certainly, I think issues with circulation, traffic, you know, Newell Extension, whatever other proposal we come up with, that would help facilitate traffic would help. And certainly, I expect there'll be something about housing and commercial as well.
Absolutely.
And just to be clear, because I didn't bring it up, climate change as well as economic development are either specific elements of the general plan update or are integrated in other elements.
That's correct.
Okay, so we're not missing out on those two big-ticket items.
No, I would expect there would be a lot of climate change with these respective elements.
Well, certainly with the Environment Impact Report, climate change will be integrated into that.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation.
Then only left is the timeframe in all of this. Because we have talked about doing this in a year or two for several years now. So what assurance do we have that this time we're serious and focused?
Well, we're looking forward to kicking it off and.
That's a start.
And going forward. And, you know, I think as much as one can manage time for. can manage time for a process like this, the two-step one is one where we will, a goal in the short term is to have a legally adequate general plan. And then we can add to it once, once we have that nice foundation.
Okay. It does seem to me that a two-step process is more apt to get the first one done if it's technical and mostly a matter of cleaning up things. And--
Correct.
So I'm hopeful. But because we haven't met all of our targets in the past, I have to be skeptical. And, and I have to go on record as being skeptical. But I wish you good luck.
Okay. Thank you. Shall we move on to our next item?
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Now, item 15, property exchange with Napa Valley Unified School District.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This last business item tonight relates to a proposed exchange of properties with the Napa Valley Unified School District. And as the staff report kind of indicates, the, the school district and American Canyon are really two of the largest landowners, we are the two, our largest landowners within, within the city. And we've, you know, historically had a practice of working together to further the interests of the community, both education and municipal. And so, you know, as we've grown over the years, from where we were in incorporation to where we are now, we've worked with the school district on a variety of different facilities. And about 25 years ago, when this partnership really first kind of kicked off, this partnership manifested itself in the creation of a kind of campus over on the west side. The city was involved in procuring the land for this acquisition. We acquired the, the land where the current middle school sits as a related to a development project in that era. And the city had taken ownership of parkland as the city, but it was really the American Canyon County Water District prior to that that had taken a dedication of land for a park. And so we assembled all these properties together and worked in partnership with the school district to kind of create this middle school campus with a community center, a gymnasium, and the aquatic center. And so at the time, it was a partnership and still remains a partnership today with the school district. At the same time, the school district has newly created the Napa Junction Elementary, or I should say relocated Napa Junction Elementary School to its new location over near the wetlands. And it has to be one of the most beautiful elementary school campuses in California. I've never seen anything like it. It's quite beautiful. The students there I know are enjoying it. And I know many of you were over at the ribbon cutting a few weeks ago. And the, the old school location is not a location that the school district has much use for anymore. And so we've been talking with the school district about an exchange of properties. We currently have a, a co-ownership relationship with them related to the community center and gym property. And so the idea is essentially to swap, swap those properties. We would no longer be a co-owner of the gymnasium, community center property, and they would no longer be the owner of the former Napa Junction School. And so it will kind of revert to a more traditional relationship, I'll kind of, kind of put it that way, where the, the school district will now be solely responsible for the middle school and the gymnasium. We'll still be responsible for the pool, of course, that will stay ours. And then we'll have an opportunity for what really is a blank slate over at the former school property, happens to be adjacent to the Little League fields, and the ability to potentially assemble that and assemble those public uses, and to really create something that the community wants and begin that conversation with the community. We've been working on this exchange for a couple of months now with the school district. And what's been pretty clear is that as we've retired the debt that, that we took on to help build part of the gymnasium property, we've now paid off that, paid off that debt, our co-ownership situation there was, was going to change. And the ability for the community to, to use that facility was going to change a little bit. It's still going to be available for rental, and just like all of the district facilities will be available for rental. But one of the key aspects that, that won't be available is the notion of larger events with alcohol. You can still have fundraisers, crab feeds and that sort of thing. But regardless of whether this land exchange goes forward, alcohol was not ever going to be allowed at the, at the middle school gym anymore. And that's consistent with their policies throughout the district and consistent with state law that generally prohibits those sorts of things unless you're at a college football stadium or something for, for football. But it's not in this particular situation. But there would still be opportunities for that kind of fundraising over at the, the former school campus, where the city would be the sole owner, and we'd have the ability to, to have our own rental programs there and, as we see fit. So there would still be some of that, some of that opportunity. One of the other aspects to this exchange involves the skateboard park, which is in a temporary location right now, and, and quite frankly, not in a great location. It's kind of hidden back there. It's only open periodically. And we're looking at new locations where we can move the existing equipment to into a place that's more, either centrally located or at least more accessible to folks, and open, you know, dawn to dusk available for use, not just when it's going to be co-existent with the, with the school operation. So those aspects are a part of this, part of this change. The other aspects, I would say, is that it's kind of an as-is sort of arrangement. So, you know, we're not going to be required to, to fix up anything. They're not going to be required to fix up anything. We're all kind of taking this as-is, and, and then we'll be moving forward. Each party is going to be responsible for its utilities and operations and maintenance and that sort of thing. Again, a more traditional kind of relationship. You know, for the city's purpose, it really comes at a, at a pretty good time. The, the middle school gym, if you look at the facility, it's roughly 20 years old, and has never had a lot of what I'll call important milestone maintenance. As this facility's reach a certain age, you know, we'll be facing it with this particular building here and in some coming years, when facilities start to get a certain age, there are major repairs, new roofs, windows, HVA system, major, major replacements. Those equipments tend to fail. Structures themselves will last longer, but the components start to need replacement. And so, you know, you could envision that middle school gym starting to be on the horizon, needing those improvements. Strangely enough, the, the way that the property's configured right now, part of the gym, part of the middle school track and track and field is actually on city property. And, and we would be in a, in a position to be responsible for that maintenance. And, and there's some major upkeeps that's, that's going to be needed there, too. So part of the benefit of this reverting to a more traditional relationship is the school district, you know, they'll be required to maintain those facilities to education standards. Education standards are quite a bit different and quite a bit higher than we have for, for local government standards. They have to go through a process and, and really have to hold things to a little bit higher standard than we do. So we're seeing it as an opportunity to, to not have to be involved in that and to, to really be able to take care of what'll be our own facility over at Napa Junction. And we can take our time deciding what we want to do with that as a community and, and figuring out how we can use it in the very short term, and then long-term plans as well. The planning commission took a look at this from a land use perspective. They took a look at this, this change in ownership and looked at the land use and found it conforms to our, to our general plan. And that's not surprising, because the public uses that's currently zoned for are going to stay the same. The school district would, would solely own the gymnasium and continue to use that in a public use. We would solely own the former Napa Junction Elementary and anticipate it would continue to have a public use. So it was a pretty, pretty simple decision for them to reach the general plan conformity. But nonetheless, we needed to go through that public review. That happened on May 26. Lastly, the, the former Napa Junction property also contains a portion of, of a road where Napa Junction Road will be extended in conjunction with the Old Hill Project. So there's an added benefit there of being able to have that road extension. That's something the developer is required to do. So there's an added benefit there. And I honestly think that's pretty much everything that's, that's covered in the staff report. Would be happy to answer any questions of the council or the public.
Questions for the council?
I had a couple. Number one, I, I do think the immediate steps for us is, once we get through this transaction, the two big issues would be the relocation of the skate park. And then secondly, you know, the re-envisioning or, or taking that blank slate and, and painting something on it. And the skate park is probably more immediate and urgent than the, than the new vision. So what do you recommend we do in terms of next steps to, to address the skate park issue, number one? And then number two, that bigger vision? And then thirdly, because somebody's going to raise it, we know that the Napa Junction school site was abandoned because there was a earthquake or a, a fault line discovered. So how do we factor in the visioning, knowing that that is also part of the equation? So those are my two questions.
It felt like three, but I'll--
It was three, but I'm going to try to wedge the fault line and the revisioning as lumping them together. Sorry.
No, those are all really great questions, Councilmember Joseph. We'll start with the first one kind of around timing, to kind of lay some expectations just around timing. So we anticipate bringing back an item to city council on June 21. And the school board would be bringing back a reciprocal item on June 23. Presuming all that goes forward, we would go into an escrow period where we're doing some more due diligence, doing title reports and some, some finalization of those details. And then we would close escrow and the properties would officially change hands. The, the skateboard park, we've been in touch with the manufacturer of this material. We actually went and did some repairs about three or four years ago. And we've been in touch with, with, with those folks. And they said, yeah, the, the equipment is all still in decent condition, worth saving, worth moving. And, you know, we're, we're moving to another location. So they've given us a price for that. And, you know, we're in the process of evaluating potential locations. They estimate, given their workload, probably about three to six months for them to relocate the skate park. And we would still have to build a concrete slab for it to, for it to go on. And we had to pick a location first. So, you know, the, the next steps on that would be determining where the, the skate park should go. And then, you know, my guess is with the concrete slab and everything, you're talking probably 150,000 to 200,000. A couple of funding sources come to mind, whether it be our general fund fund balance. We can potentially look at our park's capacity fee. We could also look at some of our capital reserve. Those are the immediate ones off the top of the head. But we want to get a little better estimate on, on costs and then pull together a project. We don't currently have a project for this in our CIP. And so, you know, when we would come back with, with an item, you know, to move forward with council, we'd identify a funding source, we'd put it in the capital program, et cetera. So, you know, the school district is looking to secure the area. Part of their interest, you know, given all the events that are trending nationally, you can, and you can see why, they have an interest in securing the property. And so that's among, among their concerns. And so, you know, they'll be looking at doing some security measures, fencing, that sort of thing in the very near term. And so it's, it's likely that the skateboard park will be unavailable for a period of time. And, you know, I think the reason for that is the security measures that they're wanting putting in place. But I do think during this escrow period, we can come up with a plan of relocation and then start to implement that. So it shouldn't be a terribly long period of time. And I think at the end of the day, there'll be a better result, a more convenient location and, and a, a longer use available for the park. As it relates to the, the planning of the uses, you know, that, that really is the initiation of a, of a community process. We'll be taking staff out there, both parking rec staff and maintenance utility staff, to just gauge the site, get some, some eyes on the very near term, kind of day one uses. We want to have a presence out there, because we want to make sure the property is secure and, and we don't want it to be an attractive nuisance or to have vandalism, that's kind of thing. So we envision bringing some of our maintenance staff over there to, you know, just have eyes on it and be a presence. And we also envision being able to program it with recreational programs, have classrooms available for rent, have the multipurpose room available for rent. And so, you know, the, the exact details of what that might cost or how that would, would go are still to be figured out. But we'll certainly have that figured out before we end up closing escrow. So, you know, that's the very near term use. I think long-term, you know, the property does have constraints. There are mapped earthquake faults, and that's what precipitated the, the move from the school district. I think the other important thing to, to keep in mind is these, the differences between the kind of educational standards and our more local standards. You know, it, the educational standards dictated that, that the facility moved. But the buildings themselves can stay. There's no requirement that the buildings be razed or demolished or what have you. We would not be able to build new structures until we did some more extensive mapping. And there are setback requirements from earthquake faults for, for a new structure. So as we start to plan long-term, that's going to be a constraint, because a, a long-term plan that involves new buildings is going to have to recognize those limitations. You know, we know, for example, the Little League Field doesn't have the same kind of limitations. We think they're more constrained on the, on the southwest. So, you know, any sort of redo that involves some new buildings might have to put some of the ball fields and parking lots more towards the south and any kind of new structures more towards the north, just from a, from a practical perspective. But we're going to have to engage a, a community process on this and to understand, you know, what the desire is. It's 15 acres all told, roughly, 14 and a half acres. So, you know, and it really starts to, to beg the imagination a little bit, because we know, for example, the honeybee farm is for sale, has been for sale for a while. And you start to think about assembling properties and sort of think about bigger visions if, if that's what the community is interested in. So I would, I would expect we're going to launch into a process involving the community, soliciting ideas. We do want to make sure the ideas are realistic, though. We've been through planning processes before that didn't have a, a realistic implementation or a funding sources or a reality of coming to fruition. So we're going to gear this, this planning process through the eye of, of achievability as opposed to just, just wish lists. But we don't have a, a start date yet on when that process is going to happen. But I expect probably at the end of summer, you know, we'll come back to council and, and talk about, you know, what kind of steering committee, what kind of process do you want to use? Do we want to have it just be presentations to the community? Do you want to have a steering committee? Do you want to have some of our commissions involved? What, what kind of, what kind of process best, you know, engages the most people? So that's the conversation we've got to have later this summer.
Great. Getting back to the skate park, can we task our Parks and Community Services Commission to quickly assess some sites and make a quick recommendation? I know we've had a little conversation about possible sites, and I think there's a couple that make a lot of sense. But it would be good to include the commission in that process, even if they hold a quick public hearing or a public meeting, just to kind of, you know, make sure we haven't forgotten something or missed something. But, but be able to pick a site rather quickly so we can get the ball rolling on that one.
Yeah. So we've been talking about that at the, at the staff level as well, Councilmember Joseph. The, the short answer is yes, there is a question on timing. They actually have a, a meeting on Thursday. And so we're not going to, we won't be prepared, you know, to have a conversation with them on Thursday. And then they don't actually have a July meeting, just like the council has taken a recess in July, they don't have a July meeting. So our plan actually with PCS was to have a joint session with the city council and the planning commission, sorry, the Parks and Community Services Commission in mid-August. And so, and that was to talk about work plan and, and responsibilities and things like that. And so we're actually thinking that might be a time where we can have a joint session with them, because it, it would allow us the opportunity to kind of scope out some ideas and present some graphics and to kind of have a, have a more engaged conversation. Aside from that, I don't know that we're going to be able to get in front of them before, certainly before Thursday.
Well, that's, that's discouraging, because I think we're dealing with a clock that's ticking. And it, it looks like it's going to tick or close by the end of summer. And it'd be nice to see if we couldn't at least identify a site. The, the rest of the details, I think, don't require a lot of public input. But the site itself is kind of the first step. So whatever we can do to expedite that, I think would be in the best interest.
I think that you will find it's pretty limited in terms of number of possible sites. Yeah. But good to have that information. Any other council comments, questions? Public comment?
Brian Lemus, I'm surprised to see that blue line going straight up Hess Road, because my idea was it was going up Napa Junction and then across and over. I don't have any objection to it. The only thing is, I am concerned about the school property, because I don't understand why the city bought an acre of land on that side of the highway for the fire department. You've got a highway with two fire departments on one side. To me, that's not good planning. I think Napa Junction's school site would be a perfect firehouse. It's, you, you don't, you could pave where the fault line goes through. You've got buildings. And you would have a fire department on this side of the highway. And then I'm concerned about the Little League Field, because I don't want to see that go away. If you have, the city has plans for that piece of parcel, I think we should know about it. I don't know what plans you have, but I don't want to see the Little League go away. It affects so many families, and it's wonderful. And I, I think, to me, the firehouse should be there. So that's my opinion.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience wishing to speak?
I would just say that being that the Little League Field is there and everything, I think-- I think it would be a perfect place for sports complex. And plus, we could use the existing cafeteria for community events, because if we rent out the community center now, if Kiwanis or whatever has a big crab feed, and they don't have any sales for liquor, that's their biggest profit right there is the liquor. So we could use that, the existing cafeteria for that. And then, like I said, Fran's got a good idea about the firehouse, but I really think that Sports Complex Center is something that we need greatly, and with the fire or the Little League Field being there already, I just think that would be a great asset.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience wishing to address the council? Do we have anybody online?
We have Chris James. Go ahead, Chris.
Hi, I'm assuming you can hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks again for this, allowing us to talk on this. I do support the exchange. I think it's a good idea. I do have some reservations, though, or some questions or concerns. I guess, you know, I'm a user of the trail that runs from QD Park One all the way through to the, past the gym, and then to the aquatic center and beyond. I use it as a shortcut. A lot of people in that neighborhood, including people taking their kids to school, use that trail. So I think it sounds like we're going to lose access to that bridge and the trail there past the skate park. So that will be a loss. I'm not sure if we can kind of work around that or kind of factor something in so we could still access that. And that building is used for certain disasters and emergencies, and I'm hoping that's in some agreement that it will be accessible quickly to the city, and we can still retain keys to the place in emergency if we can use it, especially if the other building is on a fault line, we won't want to be using that in some potential in an emergency. And this came up in the planning commission, and they were told they weren't allowed to discuss it because it wasn't within scope of the decision they were making that night, but it was all about the value of the land, right? So we're saying we're just doing this one-for-one trade, but is it really a fair swap? Are we leaving money on the table potentially for the city that our land potentially could be worth more than what we're going to be receiving? And I understand there are tangible benefits maybe we can't come up with money on, like Hess Road going all the way through to Old Hill, right? That was a promise made a while back in some meetings, that there will be access to Old Hill, and that this will accelerate that process and give access to alternatives for the West Side Connector. So I do like that part of it, but I do question maybe what the value of the swap really is. Are we getting a fair value, and are we leaving money on the table? And again, access to, from the community, that neighborhood connecting to parts of the town, we lose that as well. So those are my main concerns, but I think overall, I think it's a good thing that we consolidate that property down on Hess Road and do something really good with it. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Anybody else online?
There are no hands raised.
Okay, we'll close public comment, return to council for further discussion as needed.
Was there a resolution? There was nothing here.
No, this is just, we're trying to provide that transparency and trying to provide the awareness and discussion with the council. A couple of the comments that the public commentators made, Mr. James made, around emergency use, for example, when disasters strike, the local agencies all pull together across the region to help. When the fires happened in 2017, the American Canyon High School was used as a countywide evacuation center for the city of Calistoga of all places. So we don't need, in this exchange agreement language, that would say the middle school is available during an emergency, because the fact of the matter is, all public facilities become available as needed during an emergency, and we stop worrying about our day jobs and pull together as a community. And I have no doubt that if that facility was available and we had suffered a disaster, all these facilities would be, and the government code already talks to that. So it will be available, I can tell you. Thank you. As it related to values and leaving money on the table and such, I think it's unique when local agencies are looking at it. If we were a commercial enterprise, and they were a commercial enterprise, and we're comparing appraisals, you might be looking at dollars to dollars. The way that we're kind of looking at it is, the portion of the property that would go to the school district is what it is. It's not going to be anything else. We aren't going to be able to change what it is and put any other value to it. It is what it is. And after the exchange goes through, it's still going to be there. It's still going to be the same facility that's there. We will still have the 95% of the use of the building we did before, a different rental structure, and no alcohol, but largely the same sort of paradigm. So what we are getting out of the equation, though, is not having to go down the deferred maintenance path and not having to invest capital into that use that is only ever going to be what it is. It's a facility, it's a gymnasium, and there's the vacant area behind it. We weren't going to be able to put affordable housing in the back or put any other sort of city uses or city parks or whatever. It was fairly constrained in what was going to be there, and so not as of high value to us, because it had reached its ceiling, might be another way of describing it. But for the school district, for example, they're viewing it as an opportunity. They're viewing it as an opportunity to provide security for the area. They're viewing it as an opportunity to have a more conventional relationship with their gymnasium and their middle school. And so for them, it places a little bit of a higher value. For us, the former Napa Junction property, because of its next-door proximity to Little League, has a little bit of extra value, because we know we own the Little League, and it's such a popular facility. We don't want it to go away, we want to make it better, and having the property next door facilitates something bigger and better. Sports parks has been an idea that has been tossed about. So for us, that property being next to something we already own from a semblance perspective is even better, and we would be thinking about it. So we know it comes with the constraints of earthquake faults, we'll have to work around that. But we're not viewing it from a monetary, like a commercial enterprise, that two businesses might. We're viewing it with its intrinsic value, and we think the intrinsic value of the former property is more intrinsic, has more intrinsic value for us, as does the gymnasium property have more intrinsic value for the school district. And then any sort of deferred maintenance, or any sort of changes we would make to the old school will be based on a community vision to do what we want there. And so it's our control there. And so I think that's where the benefits are. There will be the loss of the trail. It prevents, it causes security concerns for them to have that sort of access back there, and it doesn't take much to envision a lot of negative scenarios coming out of that. So there is the recognition of that, and folks will have to go around, but it sort of is what it is.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mayor, we did have a minute order that we were proposing to kind of memorialize this public notice.
I saw that at the end. So we need to make a, go forward with a minute order. Recommended action, adopt a minute order. Memorializing notice of the city's intent to transfer property with the Napa Valley Unified School District is not considered a project under the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA.
Can I make that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, who was?
I made the motion.
And I seconded.
Okay, thank you very much. And Councilmember Joseph? Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Abdamas. I think she has fallen off of the meeting. And Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's all the business items we have for tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Moving on to our agenda, we have now management staff oral reports.
You know who you are. Erica, Brant, and Allie all have news for us.
Oh, great. What's the good news?
Well, good evening again. I'm just here to plug the local railway safety plan. As you know, we have the community survey out right now. We need input. As of last Wednesday, we only had 800 people visit our website. So we do keep tallies on it. We're getting updates every two weeks, but as of last week, we've only had about 24 take the survey and complete some comments on the city website. So it's on our virtual websites, the first sign at the top of the agenda forecast. So we're asking the community to click on that survey and also the interactive map and put down your concerns, because what this is going to help us do is not only work on data-driven statistics to get us our countermeasures and safety improvements on the city. They already identified some good locations for safety improvements. We need to hear from the community on what local safety concerns we have that may not be collected on data, because there's low collision or there's just general concerns. As you're aware, we have a complete streets assessment that's going to focus on safe routes to school corridors through Fair and Piers. That was a grant we were awarded through Berkeley Safe Truck earlier this year. And this local railway safety plan is a broader citywide improvement on the city side. So it's also a requirement for the upcoming Highway Safety Improvement Program grant funding and other state funding opportunities. So we're trying to make sure we're poised for a September grant submittal for some of these larger grant funds that are either 100% reimbursable or 90%.
So greater participation is more likely for us to receive grants?
Well, it's just making sure that the community is heard. We're engineers, we're planners, so we can tell you what we think needs to happen, but we also need to hear from the community on what they see on a day-to-day basis. So we will have some public outreach. There's opportunities like Meet in the Streets to have some flyers go out, but we really need people to click on the survey and tell us what they need, and hopefully have maybe a couple more workshops online. There wasn't a big out calling from the traffic workshop we had on May 19th. We didn't have even, I don't think, two dozen watch that or chime in, but we do appreciate those who did. If we have a change.org for safer streets, about 300, you'd think we'd have more input on a traffic calming workshop, and we did not. In addition, we have a We Heart Safe Streets campaign that'll be kicking out soon, thanks to Jen Kanzenbach and the communications team, and Becky Hendricks from Public Works for coming up with this idea of a campaign for safer streets. It's a pledge. Even at the traffic calming workshop, we didn't have anyone sign up for that pledge, saying, "I'm taking personal accountability, that I'm going to slow down and drive safe in this community and others." And you'll get a nice little, if you sign the pledge and turn it in, you'll get this nice little, one of those window clings you put on your car to say, "Hey, I'm in the pledge. I heart safer streets in American Canyon." So council members, do your thing. Press this out. It's on our city website under Public Works.
You can put a touch on that little speed sign, the one with the flashes of your number of your speed. Melvin and Teresa might help.
So it's just as part of our general traffic calming, and we have more coming, but just wanted to, I wanted to plug what we're doing, so thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I am here for our bi-monthly update on what's happening here in American Canyon. Starting tomorrow, we have our first series. The Chamber will be hosting Meet Me in the Streets from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. We hope to see you all there. On Thursday, June 9th, we will be having a PCS meeting at 6:30 p.m. You can attend via Zoom or in person. On June 11th, ACCPF will be hosting our Parks and Play series. The first one is going to be at Gadwall Park from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And June 18th, we have our Pride Pop-Up. That's going to be at Community Park Two, and it is from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. We have updated the website. The time that we did have on there was incorrect. June 19th is our first annual Juneteenth event. We're super excited for that. It's going to be at Main Street Park from 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. And June 20th is a city holiday, so nobody come to work that day. June 21st is going to be our first day official summer, so we are very excited to have summer start here in American Canyon. We have many programs, classes, camps, and swimming lessons going on, so please visit our website to see all that we have to offer. And then from June 25th through June 26th, we are going to have, we're going to be hosting a Ham Radio Field Day training at Silver Oak Park. So that is an overnight event from 11:00 a.m. starting on the 25th, and it will end at 11:00 a.m. on the 26th. So if you see people out in the park, they are meant to be there. And then on July 1st, we have our second Friday Nights at the Plaza. That is hosted by the American Canyon Arts Foundation, and that is going to be from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. And then on Monday, July 4th, we are going to have our big July 4th celebration at our Community Park Two. The parade starts at 3:00. Festivities will follow in the park at 4:00 o'clock. Fireworks will be roughly around 9:00 p.m., followed by silent disco until 10:30. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you. You can't say nothing's happening in American Canyon.
Any word on a big screen TV at Meet Me in the Street to watch the NBA game tomorrow?
We all have our phones, right?
Yeah. Community watch party is what I say.
There you go.
Yes, Mr. Cooper.
All right, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Just wanted to give you an update. Of course, we're working on our housing element, part of the general plan, and as our practice, with any major policy, we go out to meet people where they are. And so tomorrow night, we'll be at Meet in the Streets. We'll be participating in all of those. We may change our focus on what we'll be talking to people about, but tomorrow night will be about housing element. And then on the heels of that, coming up, of course, we're looking forward to participating in the Pride Day Pop-Up event and the Juneteenth event on the Sunday. So we've got a few things lined up, and more to come after that. So we'll be having fun meeting people.
All right. We're going to have a busy summer calendar, aren't we? Good. Anything further, Mr. Hawley?
That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Moving on to Mayor Council Committee reports, and then we'll take up future agenda items. See, we have a report from Councilmember Mark Joseph. Anything further to add?
A couple of things. One, I wanted to emphasize on the Climate Action Committee that we need to bring back, probably at the next meeting when we discuss the budget, this idea of a regional, countywide regional climate action plan. And whether we want to participate in that regional approach, I think there's some merit to it. The committee all endorsed it, and I think Napa County Planning Director Morrison sent out a little fact sheet. I think our share is something in the, was it 20,000 or 30,000 would be our share, or maybe I missed it, but.
I saw the email come through. I haven't had a chance to digest it. Focus on other things.
Suffice it to say that we're looking for council feedback, so obviously, part of the budget would be looking to see if we can't add that to our contribution. And then the second point, and I don't think I had it in my report, but Councilmember Washington and I were there with the city manager and staff, talking about the key performance indicators. I think we got some really good dialogue going, and the ball is in staff's court to come back with some revisions, but I think it's something that, I think it will be very beneficial in a lot of respects going forward, so I'm glad we had that meeting and glad we had that progress. So that's all I wanted to add, other than show up at Juneteenth.
Councilmember Washington?
The only thing I wanted to add, I've been contacted by several residents, but I'm glad that Hugh brought it up earlier about ADAs and the parks and being considerate about that. So if we can make that something we can address in the future, near future, I'd appreciate that. Also, Resident Chris James mentioned today about a petition. I just want to kind of clarify, or maybe you could speak to it to kind of.
Yes, I will.
Clarify to him, or not him, just the residents to know what the city is participating in and what the city is not participating in, just so he's clear, because I know they put our city attorney out as if he is advocating for something, and I just want to clear the error with that.
He's a builder of roads that are not city attorneys. I'm happy to respond to that, Councilmember Washington. I believe it's being referenced as a petition being circulated for signature right now. This would be a measure on the November 22 ballot being circulated. The petitioner is a local resident, and the idea behind the petition is to change the city's general plan to pre-zone a property on Green Island Road, 1661 Green Island Road, currently known as the Green Island Vineyards. And the petition, if it makes it onto the ballot in November and is voted yes, it would change our general plan, provide some pre-zoning for the property, it would amend the city-county urban limit line to include that property. And so the city at this point is also aware of an action that was before the Napa County Local Agency for. Local Agency Formation Commission yesterday, somewhat tangentially, but somewhat related matter, specifically for this property. And this case that was pending before, LAFCO, was a potential amendment to what was known as the sphere of influence. And there are actually two different actions that LAFCO took yesterday. The first was to include the property within the American Canyon Fire Protection District's sphere of influence, but then to deny the application to put it within the city of American Canyon's sphere of influence. And so, in the matter before LAFCO, the city decided to not take a position on that ostensibly because of this petition that's going on, this initiative measure really creates a little cart before the horse kind of thing. And so, really trying to decide, you know, what's going to happen with the initiative first, if the voters decide on it. The issue before LAFCO would be quite a bit different than if the initiative doesn't pass. So, as it relates to initiative itself, we have not taken a position on the initiative and I'm certain the city attorney hasn't taken a position on it. So, any representations that this matter is endorsed by the city attorney or anything like that would be inaccurate, to say the least. The city has not taken a position on it. We tentatively have an item scheduled for council at your July 19th meeting, not the July 19th. And that would, the results of the petition would come to the council for then, for it to then get put onto the ballot. So, if there's enough signatures collected, the council will have a decision to make on July 19th. But at this point, the city has not taken any position on that because they're in the signature gathering stage. We couldn't take a position on that. So, hopefully that explains it.
Thank you for clarifying that and clearing our city attorney's name.
Well, you know, the one thing I'd add is, when there is a petition like this circulated, I'm required to say, I give my impartial analysis and I say what a vote for means, what a vote against it means. So, that's what possibly was being referred to. So, that's it.
Thank you.
The only thing I would add to that is I think I, you know, I think I know the person we're referring to and he does make it sound like this petition is going to address traffic and it's going to do all these things. You know, and I appreciate the fact that it's appropriate to embellish a little bit when you're trying to sell, but I don't know, is there a line you can cross? I mean, the document speaks for itself, but, you know, I'm a little concerned if somebody signs something thinking, "This is going to get me the Newell extension" and it turns out to be, you know, the possible annexation of land on the west side of town, I don't want people feeling as if they've been misled. So, do we have to worry about that as a council?
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's a question, a legal question, Bill. Are there, are there any limitations on what a paid signature gatherer can say to get signatures? I think the First Amendment gives them pretty wide latitude to promise, you know, Disneyland if that's what it takes to get a signature, so, but...
Who's the signer to be informed and examined what they're being told?
Yeah, that's my concern is because, you know, I don't want somebody, I don't, I'd rather not try to sell Disneyland if all you're doing is offering a two-night stay at, you know, the Best Western or something.
I appreciate the commenter bringing that to our attention and I think that's good information. And like I said, July 19th, you know, if they gather enough signatures and those signatures are validated, we would be bringing a conversation to council and at that point, we'll have, you know, a conversation about what this is.
Certainly, there'll be a rather robust conversation.
An accurate conversation.
And no further questions, or comments. Councilmember Rural?
Oh, I had a report, went online and submitted it and it didn't take, so I'm going to redo it again. Apparently, you can't add that many pictures, so...
You broke the system.
I broke it.
You broke it.
I broke the e-comment system. And I had like seven things I entered and it hurt. And then, by then, I was too late. So, I will update it again. It's really a bunch of community events. There was Napa Valley Tourism Board update that has no consequence, but next week, I think it's next week, we'll be attending the Association of Bay Area Government meeting and they'll have a general meeting and we'll see some stuff come out of there. So, I'm going to get that thing to work, though.
Very good. Yeah. I'd just like to comment on Memorial Day, how wonderful that was. I mean, you know, the fact that you could put a flag in the ground with the family members or loved one was really meaningful and I think that just made it all the more of a personal for those of, for everyone there to attend and to have that, were part of the ceremony versus being a spectator. That was beautifully done. Well, Thrills at Devlin Road is open. Wow, that's cool. Actually, in the newspaper, there was a picture of the caravan, the cars going through and there was this, I could barely make it, it looked like probably about a 1991 maroon Toyota Previa.
Legacy vehicle.
A legacy vehicle, yes it is. It's a vintage vehicle, it's not a junker. What else was there? Well, there's going to have a lot of graduation promotions and the schools are going to be active and as IKEA pointed out, going to be a lot of activities in American Canyon coming forward. Speaking of ADA access to areas, certainly is some progress being made on the ADA access for community garden. Couple of plots there being designed. I think that's just fantastic. Certainly, getting out in the outdoors is always good for one's mental health and activity and clean air and a sense of community and accomplishing something. State Route 37 had a more of a summary of activities over time, what's going on. It's a rather lengthy report, looking at, examined all the options going through. I think what we're finally settling on is, again, reinforcing the need for a causeway over those sections, particularly between Vallejo and Infineon. The improvements that are being proposed reduces the west to east drive time, the evening drive time, from 100 minutes to 32 minutes. So, it's a great improvement. With that, all the amenities put into it. And the commute west goes from about an hour to about 23 minutes. So, this is out there now. It gets to be, show me the money question and that's many years down the road, but I think we've addressed a lot of the environmental issues on it to the satisfaction of most people. The tone has changed environmentally from, instead of litigate, then mitigate, include it in the plan, find out what we can do to make this thing accomplished. Piece of it also very forward-looking is rail line access east to west. So, you can actually connect with the Capitol Corridor in Sassoon and bring that through smart train and Petaluma connecting and then probably a commuter hub at the other end of the line to be able to move more transportation. Area's only going to grow. We need to address all the needs in the area in terms of getting people to and from. That our west to east commute in the afternoon starts around 3:00 because I've been in it and it is, I think one thing that they didn't quite capture was why is there more cars coming, less cars coming back west to east in the afternoon than there are going west, east to west in the morning? It's about 2,000 cars less, I think, Mr. Hawley and I checked it out some time ago. Why? Because when you get to Infinity, 121 to 12, 29, you come down to American Canyon. See, I always say that mantra of any commuter, where there's movement, there's hope. So, there's movement in that direction. So, I think the plan as it's going forward really addresses a lot of the concerns and it's a good compromise between, good mitigation between commuter demand and the traffic environmental issues as well. And I think a good part of it is the California Conservation has identified an area of bayland restoration, goes all the way up to the southern part of Napa. They see the marsh out there. And the eco-center that we have being proposed is certainly going to be a great part of being able to bring education to that. So, that would be my report and I'll meet you in the street tomorrow. That's going to be a great one. Any future agenda items? Hearing none? All counsel? We have concluded our business for the evening. We are adjourned, let's go find out what the election results are. We're adjourned. Nine American Canyon. Anybody peek? Huh? Of course.
About 45.
Okay.